Hello, everybody. Welcome to our regular council meeting for February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Mayor Urbanist still ways will be chairing the meeting on his behalf. So let's get right into it. We have quite a few items on the agenda today. We do also have two in camera items that believe we discussed. At the end, so with that, can we please get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Councilor Burdis. All in favor? Thanks. Next, we have, we need a motion to adopt the draft minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from February sixth, two thousand and twenty four.
I'll adopt the draft minutes from the committee of the whole meeting, February sixth, two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you, Councilor Pritchett. Second?
All second.
Councilor Burdis. Comments? It doesn't make sense for me either. So all in favor? Passed. Okay, so we need a motion to pay the open payables in the amount of one hundred thirty six thousand, seven hundred twenty one dollars and ninety six cents.
I'll make motion to pay your payables of one hundred and thirty six thousand, seven hundred twenty one dollars and ninety six cents.
Councilor Burdis?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Pritchett. Comments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Six, one, nine, three, zero.
Six, one, nine, three, zero. JR Carpentry, that was the capital budget. Repairs to the stairs and the floor at the reception.
I had one, and that was? Six, one, nine, zero, four.
Six, one, nine, zero. Centers controls, so that is a pump that was ordered that was on a capital budget.
Thanks, anyone else?
I'm fixing stairs, fifty seven hundred bucks, wow.
That was stairs, flooring, baseboards, that was the whole. Was some repairs for the building.
Hey, all in favor?
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. So next up, we have the contract award recommendation for the structural protection units. We have Fire Chief. We're here in here with us that will talk about that a little.
Good evening, Council. So I have the admin report here. For the structure protection unit RFP that we put out, I'm not gonna read it verbatim, but essentially we had one bidder provide bids with a sole bid on this. They came in very marginally under budget, so the budget was five hundred and seventy four thousand dollars for both units. Outfit is supplied delivered to Watson Lake, and they came in at. Five hundred seventy three thousand, nine hundred four dollars, ninety six dollars under budget on a five hundred and seventy four thousand dollar bid. So we can, we can call that a close call or good budgeting skills. Either way, we're, we're marginally under budget. Based on the, the appendixes that he returned to us with our criteria. He meets every requirement that I had laid out. Each spec, each item, in fact, one thing. Was able to exceed the desired spec in the portable pumps. It's kind of a nuance for, for council, but at the end of the day, this is my recommendation based on either criteria, meeting budget. A sole bidder, he's also a Canadian builder as well, so keep some business relatively close in central Alberta. That's all I really have from my admin report. Is there any questions from council?
Can we look at receiving those units before fire season?
So that was a part of my request and proposal was have very tight timelines. So I called around to multiple builders, kind of got some timelines. And fortunately, this builder was able to kind of promise that timeline. So we're looking at a mid to late May delivery at the end, at the very latest. So we should have this as hazard season hits. And then coupled with this, I'm planning on bringing in the Slave Lake Wildland Urban Interface Team to do some teaching and training on this equipment in mid to June. So we'll have the equipment, we'll be trained up into hazard season this year. So I mean, there's always, there's always possibilities, right? But that is the plan to have this before we hit peak hazard season.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for anyone else?
I. Comment and an emoji on where they are. The fact that it was exactly ninety six dollars under budget on a five hundred and seventy four thousand dollar thing. Without GST, with GST, I think the number was six twenty three, correct me if I'm wrong.
Like that.
And because of that kind of money, and it's only one bid, I would like to move that we not accept the bid from ASR Fire Services. And put it back out to tender to see if there's any other. Possible people that could supply this for less. It's just the ninety six bucks under budget just seems, they looked at our capital budget, what we had to spend and said, let's charge that. So that's why I thought that, and. That's my motion. Any second?
You have a second? Are you worried about timeline, though?
Well, here's the other thing, too. We've never had one of these. And an extra couple of months is not gonna kill us in a lot like we've nev-
I know, though.
Well, here's the thing, we have, we've, I've expanded a lot of places around here. Last year, we were within eight kilometers, or twenty, sorry, twenty two kilometers from Watson Lake. And we were not calling people like to come in, and I mean, we got some rain. We had an emergency measures meeting and stuff like that, but we were not hauling in units from other places that had these apparatuses to come save us. And so therefore, because we've never had in the past, and because I feel personally that it's. I wanna say, I feel it's very close, and I feel that we wouldn't be doing our due diligence, spending five hundred and, or actually, six hundred and twenty three thousand. It's actually way over budget, but so we're gonna have to come back to the capital budget, make an amendment.
Put GST back, yeah.
Oh, okay, so even if you give the GST back, we're still ninety six dollars under budget? Come on, guys, I'm not the only one that sees this, right?
So, Counselor, if I may.
Yeah.
I've talked to several builders before the RFP was constructed, and I went to, I, I kind of had a desired spec in mind. Which is a little bit higher end, so includes roll outdoors for easy access, better accountability of equipment, better management of equipment. And I was provided a budgetary dollar value of two hundred eighty seven thousand dollars in December, so that's the dollar figure I used. And it's the same bidder that won the bid, or sorry, submitted the bid on this. So I used the divided price provided beforehand, so based on my research.
Like from other companies, you just asked how much it would cost to build this?
Yes, now, so I, I was ballpark about two thirty five to two eighty five is what I shocked around. So the two thirty five builders, they kind of, they're a very simple setup with walk through style. But this, this builder is someone that I really desired to use based on the layout of the trailer. So it has roll outdoors, and the exterior stuff comes out on trays. It's easier to account for equipment and inventory it. If it's more manageable, it's easier to access, and it's easier to use in general. So that's, that's why I went with this spec.
So you didn't do diligence with other companies prior to even asking, giving the dollar figure, how much it would cost?
Yes, Counselor, so that's why I, I was around two hundred thirty five, and I've talked to other departments, too, that have been doing these builds. And that, the two eighty five, like this isn't, this is not the cheap version, like in no way, this isn't the, this isn't your dollar sword version of a trailer. But this is not an exceptional model either, right? You could easily spend a lot more money and put more into it. But this is the desired spec that I have, and that I wrote, and this is what we had come back for a bid.
In your worship, this tender package was put out across Canada.
Put it out again?
But they, they don't know how much we're willing to spend.
No.
That's what I'm saying, they don't know that, we don't advertise that.
They're still sole sourcing.
So we, do you have a motion on the table?
I'm making most, yeah, I'm trying to make one, and we're looking for a second here.
We need a second.
So once again, that motion was to not accept the bid. And look for other bid bidders, so we're not just sole sourcing this to the one person who applied to the thing because it's so close. And the. In the essence of accountability, I'm asking that we put it out for RFP, and the thing is, we've never had it before. And, you know, we don't know what fire season will bring yet. However, it, what's another, you know, if you've never had it before, what's another month?
Well, it could be everything, though.
We don't.
Last year?
I know, but like.
We don't have hardly any.
You have a motion on the table, we have, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, do we have a counter motion?
I will make a motion to move to accept the bid for me as Roach Fire Service in the amount of five hundred seventy three thousand, nine hundred and four dollars without GST. For the purchase of two type two structure deck units.
Thank you, Councilor Burdis, do we have a second?
Do you guys feel like we need to look at this a little bit more, or do you feel like we?
I'll second that.
That's, that's what I'm asking for, is that.
But I'm, but that's just what I'm asking, is that what people are wanting?
We have a motion, we have a second, so I guess now we'll just have discussion if quickly if you.
Why do we need it so bad in front of this company?
Do you have a question?
I just, he's done the due diligence, and I think we need it. I don't wanna have a problem like Slave Lake, or like.
Hundred percent.
Like, it's a preemptive measure, get a pretty trade on it, I just, I don't like the fact that there could be a chance of something very bad.
I'd like to be a little proactive.
That's right.
And I don't think that our town is as fire smarted as it could be. And we have been surrounded with fires, and I think that.
Been very lucky.
Eventually, it's gonna be us, right? And so if they don't, if your, if your comment is that it's so close, when they didn't know how much we were spending, then. Then they don't, they don't know that, they're not saying, oh, they're gonna spend this amount of money, and we're gonna charge them just a little bit less. So I feel like they're charging us per what, per what it is to build it. And so because it's not right at a fixed complete number, you know what I mean?
I was asking us for another shot and see if anybody else can supply the same goods for less.
And how long, how long was the bid out there for?
It was open for a month, and your worship, just for the record. The bids are close, so nobody knows that if, who's submitted. So when Roach submitted, everything comes in, it goes to Tiffany, and it's all password protected. And Roach does not know when he submits if anybody else has submitted. So to say that, you know, somebody else could have submitted too and been lower, but we, we go through the procurement. We go through the procurement system the way it is, and it's under, you know, it's, there's, there's laws on how we do it, and we follow it every law of procurement. This would be no different than when we put out for, you know, we put out for the plow truck.
So there were other bids?
No, there wasn't any, that's, Counselor Slater, I'm saying it's a closed process. Roach doesn't know who applied, we could have had more bidders, but it's no different than the plow truck. We put that out, and it was a four hundred and fifty or five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand dollar process, and we got one bid out there as well. So those things, it's just the way it is. We do it, we did our, follow all, all the legislation, all the procurement rules, and put it out to property. And it's, and it's advertised on Merx, which is a system which is fully nationally available for people to bid on.
And you advertise it the way you want it built, too, right? So this is the specs that I want?
And that's why that spec sheet is there, and it says this must, what must be on it. And on this procurement process, and Tiffany can correct me, but I think we had eight sets of plans pulled, or eight document, tender documents pulled off Merx.
Last time I checked, there was six people that pulled our tender document from, so they pulled it to view.
View, yeah, and to see if they could, yeah, see if they wanted to submit. So it wasn't like it was one company.
Just getting a thing.
It was, it was advertised nationally. Six, six proponents pulled the, pulled the package. And on the final day, when, before closing, our closing times are on, set, are advertised, they're on there, and they all come in, everything's password protected. After it closes, then Tiffany reaches out to whoever submits, not only this one, but through our process. We, we reach back out, and we ask for their passwords so they can do the tender, so nothing is known outside of this.
So in the last thirty seconds, I just managed to pull up lots like municipality websites and looked up the capital budget to see what we allocated for that.
Yeah, but that's a, I guess for point of order, Counselor Slater, that's a budgetary number. So if somebody would have, else would have bid, and they came in at fifty thousand dollars less than this guy, then the recommendation would have been, and they met the requirements. Then the recommendation would be to go to them.
Well, similarly, with the landfill, we had bids that came in for that that we felt were higher than what we were prepared to spend, even though the guy signed money. We still put that up for bid again. Again, the bids came in absolutely high.
ridiculously high, though.
Yeah, well, you think five hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, chump change?
No, but we.
No, but it is actually under what we budgeted, it's basically what we budgeted, and there are many things.
You're gonna be accountable for your actions when?
Hundred percent, so you have a motion on the table and a second, that's it. I'll call the question, all in favor?
All in favor, what are we all in favor of?
Dale made a motion to accept the proposal, and I seconded that.
I'm going with it.
Thank you, passed.
Please, please, you might be on the record.
Against this. Thanks, thank you. All right, moving on. We have contract award recommendation for the groundwater well monitoring. Want to do that one? Okay, so this admin report is to obtain council approval to complete, again, a single source procurement. And for the replacing of three monitoring wells at the landfill, for the two, for the two lagoon monitoring wells, and three monitoring wells at landfill, excuse me. For the total amount of one hundred fifty five thousand, four hundred dollars without GST.
You guys love single source and stuff. Pardon? Well, I'm saying. So this, again, we, we haven't even put this up to tender yet. But because they're familiar with it, and their estimated timeline will be done, to be finished in June. To complete this work, that's why we're. Going with the notion of going through a single source procurement without giving anybody else the opportunity to bid on it. Because they're familiar with the project. And other things in the past. And because I moved once to not single source something, I'm gonna move a second time, do not approve a single source procurement to Morrison Herschfield. For groundwater well replacement at the lagoon and direct administration to put it out for.
I think I'd actually like to read this, just for the record, because I can't remember when that was actually done, and just so that everybody knows what we're talking about. To hold that thought for a moment. So administration was served with a memo from YG Water Resources by environmental compliance.
On May, what date?
The memos.
What date is it stated, for the record, May?
Uh, no, it's not in this report, no.
And your worship, I'll play, provide some clarity once you're done.
Thank you. The memo stated that the town was required to drill two new monitoring wells at the sewage lagoon and three monitoring wells at the landfill. As some of our existing monitoring wells are not producing samples. Administration consulted with four different consultants regarding the memo. Their consensus was that we would have to comply with the memo and drill the monitoring wells. In conjunction with the lagoon wells, we are also required to update the hydro geological assessment that we had commissioned in two thousand and nineteen. And was completed by Morrison, Morrison Herschfield in two thousand and twenty as a condition of our water license. Administration has contacted various engineering and consultants. Regarding the drilling of the wells and updated assessment. We are in the process of submitting our water license renewal and currently have our solid waste permit at Gessen. As such, our timelines to have this work completed is very short. Based on this, Morrison Herschfield is the only company that has submitted a proposal to complete the work, and they have been successful in locating a subcontractor drilling company. Morrison Herschfield's proposal is approximately double what administration had proposed council during budgeting. Administration could put it on RFP, however, this will request to extend our timeline into the summer and jeopardize our license and permit renewals. Morrison Herschfield, excuse me, has the knowledge of our project and will be able to just complete an appendix to our current hydro geological assessment. The largest part of the proposal cost what administration met with Morrison Herschfield was the drilling cost. And due to the current availability of drillers being very limited, the work at the two sites could potentially be separated, but that would put costs higher due to the move and demo costs of potentially different drilling companies. Based on the higher costs, administration will have to bring a capital budget amendment forward later this year, and the costs will be covered by the CCBF funds. Now. Did you have something to say?
Well, already it's double. I will lead budget for this. And again, just because we're familiar with it doesn't mean you can't find a driller. It's not like. You're looking for a unicorn. Yes, they're familiar with it, and because, you know, fairness. And in previous meetings that we've had, and these council chambers, people said, well, this is our policy, we should follow this policy. Don't see it happening, but. Anyway.
So there actually is a section about single source procurement in the procurement policy?
There it is, and it, and it has a, a final completion date as of June in that letter. And whether it be June or July, to do. In a more transparent fashion. They're not gonna pull our water license, be like, you can't stop pumping water, or you can't start, you know what I mean, like, it's not gonna happen. So anyway, those are my thoughts, they're not gonna be like, oh, we're gonna have to shut that well up, nobody will have water in Watson Lake because this isn't compliant. When this has been an ongoing thing, and I think putting it out for a RFP is not the end of the world.
It might not pull the license, but we may have significant fines if we don't come to line. Cam, can you shed a little more light on this, please? Thank you.
You're, you're correct, your worship, it, it could put us in violation of their order. And Counselor Slater is right, this memo was dated May first, we didn't get it May first. But ever since then, we've been back and forth with four different consulting firms trying to argue the needs for it. Based on our data that goes back to nineteen seventy five. And we've been told by four different consulting firms that. They even had, we had one firm actually went and met with Water Resources, and we were told that it is a matter, not a matter of us arguing it, it has to be done. So it just comes down to timeframes. You know. We can put it out for our, our P on this, or our T, whichever we're going, we decide to go. But this is gonna pause our application, unfortunately, it's gonna pause our application for our water license renewal. Because we can't submit our renewal until this work is complete.
And we've been mandated to do this, so it's not a matter of it ends or but, we have to do it.
Unfortunately, I don't, I agree with Counselor Slater, I don't like it, I don't like the fact that the prices have doubled. But I don't like the fact that nobody else is willing to give us a price based on our timeframe and build that they have drillers either. I, I don't, it's a, it's next, but unfortunately, it's, it's, it's been the plate that's been served to us, and we can either accept it or not accept it. And if we don't accept it, then I will deal with the consequences through regulatory, so.
So what's responsible, once again, just our license could be pulled?
Well, our license, our license, our license, our license application cannot be submitted.
Yeah.
And we have to have it submitted because we're trying to get our twenty five year one, I guess, because last time we submitted, we asked for a twenty five year.
Yeah.
And because we didn't have some of these monitoring wells done that they requested last time, they only give us a five year license. So every time that we don't meet the hurdles they give us, then they shorten that timeframe up, and we end up spending.
When does that five year license expire?
It expires a year, coming up in a year. And the application on the water board is one year prior to this expiry of our license. I think it's crap because of the fact that we have to submit stuff a year in advance, but I'm, it's not my rules, we're just playing by them. And currently, our, we have until the fifteenth of March to respond to yes of as to what our plan is going forward.
That's not much time.
I'll do something else, just one sec. So, yes, normally, if it wasn't on a timeframe, I would, I don't, I don't like this road either.
How much does it cost to renew that every, like, I just, what's?
Our license, consulting fees, by the time we're done consulting piece and everything, I would say we're probably fifty or sixty thousand.
Every five years, well, because we can't get the.
Because we haven't got the twenty five year license. If we get the twenty five year license, then it's mute, we don't spend anything until.
Yeah.
When it expires or anything. So you know, we've got to put in between a rock and a hard place with these guys pulling this out.
Is it guaranteed for us to get the twenty five year so if we do these souls, or not even?
There's no guarantee.
But if we don't do it, they won't give us the twenty five years.
I, I would pretty well guarantee.
Yeah.
Because we're not in compliance, in our water license, it states that we must meet all regulatory requests that they send out. So no matter what, we have to drill the wells. So it's just a matter of us trying to get, so we can get their yes of stuff done. Like I said, that process has been going on since July with yes of. And we just got the memo last week that stated that they had more questions, wanting confirmation on when we depend, when we are going to drill wells.
So if we just, like, if you apply, say, a couple of months before the, or after the one year deadline, what happens then when our license expires?
Should have let the lease, it puts us in bad standing, and we potentially could be fined.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it happen, and I agree with Counselor Slater, it's not like they're gonna come in and tell us to shut down some.
That's right.
But we fought, fought long and hard to get back into compliance with our regulators, and we are. Other than this outstanding matter that they're blocking, or I think we're seeing witness with. Because they, we've submitted all the documentation and on the wells, so I.
What's your gut instinct? Do you think that if we were to put it out there and somebody else were to apply, that the cost would be even more because they know?
That's the other thing I say.
Do you think that the price is actually less because they do know our system and they are familiar with our system?
I, I do believe that because of the fact that we're not rewriting the whole hydro geological assessment again. And that document is hundreds of pages, so it's based on the history from nineteen seventy five forward.
This might be kind of in gas tax, right?
It is.
And I was just thinking, like, so say if we wait, though, could they even, like, like, the bids could be higher? And then the kids, if we just simply, like, it's just, I don't.
Like, and that's, that's the change now, because when I threw in those budgetary numbers, if I knew it was gonna be like this, when I put in the budget, I would put in a hundred and something. Because, you know, we try to stay on top of that, but when I go back, and part of it's my fault, because when I went back, I looked at drilling two wells at the landfill. And two wells. At the lagoon, well, it turns out to be three wells at the landfill. So if you look at my original budgetary, it was twenty thousand bucks. For well.
I thought, why did you spend the bill for seventy five grand of that, or fifty grand? For the landfill, for the monitoring wells?
They, they, YG pays for the water monitoring, not the drilling.
Gotcha.
Oh, just the monitor.
The antics.
Yeah, so, so, you know, so by adding that extra well, even with my other math, we would have been at a hundred.
Yeah.
And that's, and then that wasn't, you know, then the hydro geological comes in, and then all of a sudden, the drillers know because there's other work. That all of a sudden, instead of doing one well for twenty grand, they're doing them for thirty or thirty five, right? So.
And they can guarantee that this work will be done on time?
Yeah. They're willing to start drilling in the next two weeks.
Okay. This is your motion.
I begrudgingly move to accept. The single source procurement to Morrison Herschfield for groundwater wall replacement at the lagoon and landfill. For one hundred and fifty five thousand, four hundred dollars without GST.
Thank you, Counselor.
Second that.
Counselor Pritchett, all in favor? All right. All right, so.
For explaining that.
Moving on, we're moving on to the first reading of fire protection and life safety bylaw. Do, Fire Chief Turpin, do you wanna?
Would you like me to provide just that in the report, or go through the bylaw, suggested bylaw?
I'm gone. So we're mostly just, you know, high level. People review, we're just doing the first reading tonight so that it goes public, and.
Sounds good, so, again, I'll try and avoid reading it verbatim, I'm sure you guys don't need that. The big thing, though, is this is a combination of bylaw ninety nine seventeen and eighteen dash twelve. Single two bylaws had a lot of overlaps when I reviewed them. I actually, as a matter of fact, my starter, Cam, gave me, sorry, the CEO provided me two bylaws review, and I went through one, I made a ton of changes and amendments, and then I was like, okay, that's about the second one, I went, whoa, no, stop there. So I came to him with that, and he goes, yeah, that's what I was hoping you'd find, and so we decided that. Surely that we should combine the two bylaws and condense it. So a lot of the findings I had in the bylaws was a lot of things that are either policy, guideline, procedure, that kind of stuff, the fire department, like firefighter should do this, or she'll not do this, or so on, so on, kind of thing on fire scene stuff. That's, again, more appropriate in policies, procedures, and guidelines internally, so I removed a lot of that kind of stuff. I made sure that there was modernized terminology as far as delegation authority for my responsibility. So a lot of the additions I made are increased responsibilities for myself, and actually increased accountability for myself, or, or whomever takes this position on in the future. Stuff like, just ensuring that we are, we are covered for inspections and investigations and access to property and those kind of things through bylaw as well. Uh, just ensuring that we are, we are covered for inspections and investigations and access to property and those kind of things through bylaw as well. Um, so again, just to close that part off, so the recommendations better reflect the needs of the organization to increase public safety and it adds the fire chief's accountability to the public in the town. Uh, as far as financial applications, there are no direct financial applications. Uh, there'll be time associated with completing certain aspects laid out, such as inspection investigations. Uh, it's not abnormal to. Fire chief or director of technical services duties. So again, it's just time, software that's used, programs that are used on our sort of territorial assets. So we don't have to worry about that kind of stuff on the inspection end of things. Uh, and then strategic priorities, right? I know public safety, community safety and wildfire protection. It's not so much wildfire protection, but the community safety aspect. Uh, you'll see that the, mostly amendments tie in pretty directly to that. So, and again, this was. Brought to me by the CAO, so I've provided my suggestions and recommendations and then brought it back to council for. View here. So that is all I have, um, get for my admin reports. Is there any questions on the report itself or on the bylaw?
There's some things in here, I'm noticing eight point zero one. Which I was told was actually, it was supposed to be the all members of the fire department should be appointed by the fire chief. Previously, that was the captains and the deputy chief that sat with the fire chief. To determine the suitability of new recruits, and now we've taken that from the team and it's one person decision now.
So the reason I've gone to this, um, and I know my understanding is there was a voting process previously. But again, we have to consider that these are municipal hired casual staff members. And we have to have due process for them. So that's going to include an interview process, like an application period, an interview process, meeting criteria. And I'm absolutely gonna take into accountability people's perspective of others too. So if we have somebody that comes on, let's say. Individual A and I talk to the guy and they say, no, no, this, he's no good for us, I'm. I'm not gonna discredit that. I'll absolutely take that into consideration.
But doesn't say that.
It, the bylaw doesn't say a lot of things, councillor. So we, we can't have every semantic in there. Um, but at the end of the day, it's my job to be responsible for it. And so this delegates the authority to me as the fire chief to make sure that I am looking after the hiring and firing of members of the department, which is important.
Got you. Now, the disciplinary actions of the fire department should be under the fire chief for sure. However, this is a team sport, if you will.
Absolutely.
And previously in the old bylaw, it did have. Uh, explicit directions. I'd just like to see that. Uh, put back in.
So this isn't about, sorry councillor, this isn't about the entire process. This is just the appointment of a member to the fire department. So for somebody to be appointed to the fire department, that has to be determined by the manager, just like any other. Uh, position in the town. At the end of the day, administration or manager has to appoint that person.
Can you direct me to the part where it says that you guys have a meeting and decide?
There is no part of the, that said we have a meeting about it. Because again, this doesn't lay out the process, it's just lays out that I appoint the, the members of the fire department.
Got you. Doesn't sound like it. That's on my point.
So a- again councillor, this is not the process, this is just the appointment.
There's, Your Worship, just for the record, there's policies that go to support all this stuff. This is just the bylaw with. The meat and potatoes, and then the policies will fill in, filter Lloyd's and ask the thing. But, um, yeah, tonight is just to get that first reading and then the debate really is the.
Is this gonna be at the top?
Maybe at the whole, by March fourth.
So March fourth, we can have more awesome discussion on it.
Okay, so we're not having discussion about it right now?
Uh, let's do something quickly, but I mean, we're just here to do first reading.
So that probably takes a chance.
That's right.
Okay. Make a motion to do the first reading so the public can look at this and give us their input.
Thank you.
I will say.
Thank you.
That would be by law twenty four dash zero one. Being the fire production, life, life safety bylaw.
Thank you, Councillor Slager.
Can I just add one comment?
Yes.
Seventeen dot oh three, just because I think it pertains to the bylaw that needs to be put in the bylaw, Director of Operations, there's no definition for that in here. So I don't know if you want to put that in here or not. That was just a, a specific to the. And it's only used in here once, so I'm not sure if you wanted to. Put a different word in there or use that in particular.
Well, Your Worship, if it's referring to a position in town, then we need to have that laid out with definitions.
It's, it's under fire hydrants. So.
Okay, all in favor? Carried. Perfect. So that'll be back, um, on, on March fifth. Community, committee of the whole meeting for further discussion. I can't get that out. All right, so, uh, moving on to second reading of zoning amendment by law twenty twenty four dash zero three, which is kilometer, uh. One thousand twenty three point five Watson Lake, which was the, um. The old Harding Farms, um, probably trying to open that. Okay, um. Yeah, and that's a rezoning from rural residential to, um, industrial M two.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Slager. A second. So Councillor Burdas, all in favor? Passed. All right, so, uh, we also have first reading of the fees and charges amendment by law twenty twenty four dash zero four. Um, so there was, um, the draft bylaw, which is just a couple of lines, but then the appendix A, um, I was. Hoping that. Are you able to just go overturn the things that were changed in there?
Um, it's just first reading, maybe. Yeah, it's just first reading, so.
Oh, okay, so you can do that on the fifth as well.
That's right. It's, it's, it's for first reading, so then it can be put out for feedback.
Make a motion to introduce fees and changes and amendment by law twenty four dash so four for first reading.
Thank you, Councillor Slager. Thank you. Councillor Burdas, um, all in favor? Pass. Okay. Um, so next up, we have the petition, conditional use application from First Casca, um, for.
It's a court.
A courting permit for the property on Auburn Drive.
I move to approve, I make a motion to approve the conditional use application for. Castle, Castle Forest Resources limited to allow for a gravel pit on the property located at one twenty Auburn Drive.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Burdas, Councillor Paquette, all in favor? Passed. And just like I heard, we had a public hearing for that, um, conditional use permit, um, at the last meeting, and there were no.
No submissions, right? That's what I was just gonna ask.
There were no submissions, um.
So, so Your Worship, um, um. The development officer will follow up with the final paper, just so it's in writing for you, for First Casca. Thank you, Councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving right along, we now have the Watson Lake Fire Department remuneration policy. Well, the M and the N are reversed in this word as well. Remuneration policy, so, um, Chief Chairman, if you can.
Good evening, Councilor, glad to see you again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Again, my steps in. Um, so I went over the admin report last time I presented this to council. Uh, I was asked to go to the fire ship, or the fire membership story and get more feedback and come back with that. So. Uh, I presented it to them initially, there was good feedback, um, then, uh, over my time being away, there were some questions and they've had some time to think lots of things. We had further discussion on it. Uh, a few of the topics that were discussed was, again, the steps, you know, the lowest pay, the highest pay, uh, whether steps are appropriate based on rank. Um, and then comparison and contrast to other departments. And then I was also just informed that. And again, this is a personnel thing, but the, the previous fire chief had earmarked thirty dollars an hour for everybody across the board, which was something I was not provided. Uh, that information. So there was a bit of an expectation that there's gonna be a bit more, um, and unfortunately, again, that wasn't provided to me. Generally speaking, people are happy with an increase in pay. There's a little bit of, um. I wouldn't say, not discontent, but just not a hundred percent agreeance across the board on how it's done. Uh, but the general consensus is people are happy that they'll see more pay. It's a little bit closer. Um, from my perspective and strategic approach, seeing the steps in the pay, I think is very important. Especially when we have officers that have more responsibility, uh, even on an OHS. Scale, looking at it from that perspective or through that scope, somebody in charge of a scene like an officer is gonna have a lot more liability on them. Um, realistically, they should have more experience, should have more training, and I think that scales up accurately. I, I believe that's a fair approach. Um, it's not necessarily the same approach across the territory, but across the Canadian Fire Services whole, that's pretty normal. Um. Again, there was no general consensus brought up from the membership. Uh, there was questions about stuff, again, like I said, but overall. Uh, they're happy with an increase in pay for the most part is, is the takeaway from it, so.
Okay.
I just got one question. So the, um, increases like, where it says like fifteen percent. Um, so like if minimum wage goes up, you still get the fifteen percent of minimum wage?
Yeah, so in fact, we had a minimum wage bump. So now, those identified numbers in there are actually just like.
Example, yeah, and stuff. No, that's, I was just wondering. So every time minimum wage goes up, you still get the fifteen percent.
That was, that was the kind of nice thing about it, was that it was like self indexing, right?
Yeah, it's just, so.
So you're never, like, somebody comes in, will make more than somebody that's in there. Yeah.
Okay. So can you explain to me how the on-call system might work?
So I don't have anything in place yet, but what I envision potentially is that, um, cycling officers through like a seven PM through seven AM on-call schedule. Uh, during the week so that they can take that, um, on-call. So what we probably do, and again, this is just off the top of my head here, is I would probably alternate weeks. So it'd be. An on-call off, like a sort of pin-on call officer, then myself, then another pin-on call officer, then myself. So with four captains and a deputy chief. And then myself integrated in every other opposite week, and that's for the after-hours calls as well as the daytime calls. Um, it would give myself a bit of a break so that I'm not having to ask the radio every single time. I, I understand the role of the position here, it's quite busy, but it gives me that break once in a while. And then I can kind of get those guys into a role and start mentoring them into more of a. A better tactical leadership role and give them that opportunity to do that, so that they're answering the radio, then now they're running the call. And on those, on those occasions, I would like to see them even have the command truck. And run those incidents, um, kind of themselves, and I would probably show up and mentor or shadow them, but. Uh, basically, it's just the sharing of, of authority is what it is. So. Again, this, I don't have a defined schedule or a, even, um. Any solid suggestion to present, but it would be an after-hours type thing and weekends type thing. And that way we have. At least assurance, we have an officer on at all times, especially if I'm away on holidays, um, or other circumstances arise kind of thing.
Understood. Um, so, fellow council members, as you. As you all know, from the fire department for most of decade. And when I started there, um, this is many pounds ago. I, it was at twenty dollars a ton. And currently, under this, we have a new recruit, somebody who, sure, brand new, but they're walking and they're only making nineteen. They're actually getting paid less than what we're making, we're paying them twenty years ago. Now, if you were to assume a two percent increase, which is like very basic minimal inflation. Two percent on twenty dollars, forty cents. Turns out by, let's say, forty cents a year. Times twenty years, eight bucks. Well, compound interest, it'd actually be more. So I think thirty dollars an hour because for how often this is looked at and reviewed, I think if we just pegged it flat rate thirty bucks. You wouldn't have people trying to climb over the next guy to get at the captain's seat because then you get an extra two dollars an hour. Um, I can tell you also from experience that, you know, being a firefighter, it wasn't about the money until it does become about the money. Because. At some point, it's just not worth it. We don't have that many calls that would break the bank. And if you wanna, you want somebody out there on the highway, forty below, cutting somebody out of the car. And I don't think thirty dollars an hour is a lot to ask for. I feel it shows that you value them, you, you appreciate their contribution, rather than just having a dinner for them every Christmas party. Um, I think that thirty dollars an hour flat rate would also, uh. You would like accounting stuff, oh, you're twelve months, oh, this is your thirteen month, oh, you no longer make ninety dollars an hour, you make twenty three, forty eight. Um, thirty bucks an hour, not unreasonable. That's what I propose. We, uh, make a motion towards.
This is just first reading, though, right?
Well, this is a policy.
Oh, it's a policy, so we don't do like three, I see.
And we've also taken away their hundred and thirty dollars an hour radio dispatch for back in the radio in the first place. Because we have a central dispatch that does that for us. So that's something that, you know, you could, you, you pack the radio anyway. Now you just don't get paid for it. So.
Can I make a comment on the radio?
Oh, sorry, we want to get a dollar an hour. When ambulance pays seven now. Go for it.
If, if I may, sorry, um, we're gonna be moving to likely a phone CAD interface, so computer aided dispatch phone interface. Uh, through our dispatch provider, who is required to do so by contract with the fire marshal's office. So what it would look like is a priority notification on your cell phone that can even go off when your phone's muted. And then from there, you can. Hit response, and now you're responding. And then everyone else can see on the phone. Who all responding, and they can see where they're at, they're live tracking, uh, and mapping, and we can see where the incident is through the mapping. So it's an inclusive program. Of course. I, I would like to pay more than thirty dollars to everybody, um, I think, because. When you look at the full-time fire service world, there most of the time, majority of the time, they're part on their bombs, right? But when they're actually doing the work, that's when they're earning it versus we only get called out when they're actually earning the dollars and. Um, I agree with that. I think, I think closer to thirty dollars an hour for everybody would be great, but. It's gonna come down to budget. At the same time, though, I do. I do feel that steps are appropriate, uh, for different ranks based on the amount of responsibility they would have at those positions. Uh, and a bit of that too is the desire. So I don't, I don't feel we'd have people climbing over each other, but it would. Create a bit of incentive for those to take extra training and to promote up and, and that's just part of the growth fund for the department too, to have that continued growth within. Um, so we can continue to fill those positions. Because if we lost three of our officers tomorrow, who are we gonna have that's been working towards that? We don't have that. And, and not that this is the end all be all for that, but it is an incentive for that, so. Um, that, that's where I'll, I'll leave that comment.
And what are the other, like, because you had a meeting about this and so like, so there was not many, like, negative comments on what their pay was, like?
Yeah, so there was, they feel, generally speaking, they feel it's pretty low, but in contrast to other departments, they understand where it's at, right? So. There was a lot of back and forth and no real consensus on, on it for the most part. Um. Some even discussed that thirty dollars an hour was far too low based on the work they do. Uh, we looked at other. Uh, policies that other municipalities have, so like Dawson that pays twenty five an hour to their firefighters and twenty dollars per training session. Uh, currently, our twenty dollars an hour and fifty dollars per training session is, is just, it's relatively low, honestly.
At least to make it up for that with refreshments, but now we no longer serve refreshments either.
Well, the thing that concerns me is the firefighters making twenty three dollars an hour. If you actually look at our collective agreement. There will be students that are making more money than the firefighters, and the firefighters have a significant amount of risk involved in what they do than. Any student working within municipality. That's my concern. And I've had a lot of firefighters coming to me that do not agree with this one bit. And honestly, you, I'm gonna tell you right now, we're gonna start losing people. And if that's your, if that's what you decide. Then that's, that's on, that's on, that's on this. And so I will vote against this right off the bat.
So I think for me, like, I see, I agree with what you're saying about the tiered system, and I, I kind of agree with that, like, it gives you something to work towards and, um. Creates a six, what's the word, succession.
Plan.
Succession plan, um. But I don't disagree with maybe a higher baseline amount, and I mean, you're right, it does come down to budget. Um, but that's what we do. That's the only input that we have to anything as budget. So, um, I mean. Could we look at maybe just increasing that baseline amount too? Because like, I don't know what.
Well, yeah.
Like what, you know, to increase that baseline amount and then still have that tiered system.
Exactly, like the tiered system.
I'm also finishing my comment. Right now, when is this training gonna happen? Because right now. Our deputy fire chief isn't trained to do that. Our captains have no training to do that. They have no certi- certification. So right now, we have everybody that is technically a firefighter. Everybody right now that you're talking about is just a title. So we're paying people to have a title when they have no training behind them. They have experience, but where's their certification? None of that has even been talked about here, about education, making sure these guys are certified, making sure that they're accountable for what they're doing and they know what they're doing.
Are you talking?
I'm talking about, okay, what training is there for to be a deputy fire chief? Is there training for that? Or is it just a title that we're giving somebody?
Why don't we let, um, Chief Chairman?
That's, that's why I'm asking. I'm putting that out there.
Okay, I'll, I'll get to that in a second, sorry. But the general pay, I don't wanna, I don't want you guys to be under the impression that I'm trying to cut these guys short, because that's not what I'm doing. Uh, I came out with certain dollar values that was different from other municipalities, um. Some plus, some minus, but an increase from what we had, substantially increased from what we had after the recruit year kind of thing. Um, I am absolutely an advocate for increased pay for these guys. I would like to see, I'd like to see guys starting at thirty and then tiered up if America could. Um, again, I'm an advocate of tiered system, of course, but, uh, if, if we wish to increase that. Drastically, I am one hundred percent supportive of that. I would love to do that for the membership. Uh, again, it's just proposed numbers that I threw out there, right? That was kind of a, a happy medium. Um, so as far as training requirements, yeah, on paper, we have very little, and that's, that's gonna be my responsibility over the duration of my contract to make sure we get members up to stuff. So. Right now, I can't. Like you said, we're gonna lose members. If I go in the hall and say, this is my expectation, now you're just a firefighter because you can't meet this expectation, again, we're gonna lose people, right? Um, so I'm working on a training plan that's gonna look at the tactics of what we do on fire scenes, our general leadership, um, advanced skills. I've been applying for lots of grant funding to bring in advanced training courses, which we'll see all of our members take. I've been applying for lots of grant funding to bring in advanced training courses, which we'll see all of our members take. Um we've been, the mentorship process is gonna be slow, but we're gonna get there. I've I've been here about four months. Uh I've already seen some improvements, which I'm very happy with. Uh but it's gonna take time. So again, in the in the policy, there's no correlation to exact training. If you want to see exact training requirements in there, that is something I can definitely add in. Um but it'll take some time to write that, and again, that's something that'll need some consultation. With the membership and with other departments and the fire marshal's office and kind of that three hundred sixty degree view, but. Um I'm not trying to prohibit anybody from reaching these positions. But in a way, you do bring up a good point that we are lacking a lot of the proper training and accreditation. Uh to be filling a lot of the roles that we are filling. Which is something that the onus is on me, and that's my responsibility to to look out for that in in due time, as appropriate kind of thing.
And you do talk about a tier a tier system here. What about firefighters? So a firefighter that's been here for like. One year, two years is getting the same amount as a firefighter then, that's been here for like fifteen years, ten years.
Yes. And that's because.
And so there's a lot of guys that aren't happy with that.
Okay, so that that discussed, sorry.
Um so I think we're all in agreement, and if we threw the motion out there to start it at thirty bucks an hour, I. I have a good feeling about that, but currently, do we have? Anything that we uh do to increase the team building slash camaraderie, like not just cutting up cars and going on a call, but like fun stuff. Other than the Christmas dinner, do we have anything that's like non?
So we're related. In the special advanced budget line, I added five hundred dollars. Uh the plan with that is to host a family event day at the fire hall where we bring in. Um the spouses, the children, the families of the firefighters, and they get to come in and see what we do. And they'll get actually, the the spouses and the children will get hands on with some of the activities, and. I'm hoping with that five hundred dollars, we can do more than just a barbecue. We can actually bring in some form of entertainment. Um and and I wanna, I really would like to build a family atmosphere in the fire hall. Again, as budget and and time permits, so I have budgeted for that, that kind of stuff. Um I'm hoping it can occur, I've done, you know, one or two team building activities amongst the training nights. So slowly working that way, but again, I've I've been here since November. December thirtieth with essentially a month fall, so it's been difficult to make any real massive moves, right?
Currently, what do we do with the money that we get from alarm checks then?
Uh your worship, that goes to the firefighter association, so whatever they do, that's that's them.
He's part of it, so what do we do?
Well, they get. The firefighters association.
Okay.
That's this is the town.
So would it be? Um. Appropriate to send it back for some revisions before we pass up.
You.
Pass the motion on this?
Yes, your worship.
Can we just ask for a little bit? I don't know.
So I guess what what administration is gonna look for from council is. Where, if you're okay with the tier system, where would you like that magic number to start?
Like that number, thirty dollars, thirty dollars.
But I like the tier system, I do like that, uh you, cause it does give incentive to get more training, to become.
Yeah, but just because you get the training doesn't mean like. Like Brento's captain.
Oh, I know.
If we're counting on Brento just buying so that he can get his captain's stamp and. Uh Joe Thomas, Brian Lynn, Jason Kearns. Those are the other captains.
Yeah.
Um. Anyway.
Okay, let's send it back for some revisions and then we'll revisit this.
Yeah, so start off with thirty.
Thirty dollars baseline, um.
Okay, um just a little, just from to try and make it smooth though. We would, I would still, administration would still like to base it off of a percentage above minimum wage. So that way, we're not coming back to council every year, every two years. To change it because magically in in a few years, minimum wage is.
Yeah, I like. I love that it was um self-indexing as well. So um just can you give us some suggestions based on that, just knowing that that's kind of.
Yeah.
What we're looking at?
Yeah, so Chief Turpin and I will sit down and we'll look at the percentages based on this. That that's use thirty dollars uh as the baseline and then go from there. Because it does, um in the bylaw, it states there's responsibility for each rank you hold, right? So there's gotta be some incentive. Why would, if you're getting paid thirty dollars an hour. Why would you wanna be wearing all the occupational health and safety and responsibility for everybody? For the same dollar amount as the guy that's been on the fire department for here. So I think it does need to be tiered from administration's point of view. And and then we'll base our wages off of your recommendation and we'll bring it back to you guys. And we can bring it back for the the meeting on the fifth with the rest of them, if you want. That's maybe the whole.
That sounds good. If you guys have enough time.
I may not.
Well, yeah, I guess we'll talk about Zoom and interview.
Yeah, we can we can try and do something, yeah.
Um I just have one last question. Um we just, there's mentioned a standard operating guidelines and stuff like that in there, which is like a separate policy that I think that would. Um you know, is how, like this is the bylaw with like the authorities and stuff, but then there's like the the. How the department actually runs, and I'm wondering if that's not where the training things and whatnot would be addressed. And those requirements of the membership.
Yes, that's where you would find.
Okay, so that's kind of still come.
And we and we do have a draft SOP stuff that was there from when uh. Um Chief Herrer had it started, but it's, I don't know, it's hundreds of pages and it's, some of it's not really applicable.
It it's gonna take some extensive review and and. A lot of stuff.
And it's it's coming down to being compliant under O G N S standards and and National Fire Protection Act. So there's a lot of work. Um unfortunately, Chief Turpin's, like I said, four months into the job.
Yeah.
And he's dealing with. Thirty years of stuff that's been developed, so.
All right.
Um everyone else is also in agreement with the two-hour minimum call out for the incidents.
Like.
Like a minimum, if you go and.
I get a hold out of bed at three o'clock in the morning, you drive down, thirty below in your truck, not even warmed up. Up in the command truck to go do a lift assist or something like that, and uh, you know. Takes you ten minutes, but like you still got out of bed at three o'clock in the morning.
And if it's fifty below and you gotta start your car.
Yeah, you're not, I mean, anyway, so.
Okay.
You're good with that?
I I am.
We'll have a chance to review all of it, so, yeah.
Just trying to give them some clear direction.
Okay, so thank you so much for coming out, and thank you for speaking to all of those admin reports. I really appreciate it. Appreciate everything you're doing over at the fire department and. Look forward to further discussion.
Thank you, council.
Yes. All right. So um next up, we have a couple of donation requests, although are these the two that we had um at the last meeting?
Uh so yes, uh your worship, uh the one, the first one is the one that the council bounced back for more clarity.
Like, it gives people, or you didn't know what they wanted the money for, they just wanted.
I still.
But instead of five hundred dollars, it's a thousand dollars this time, but there's also provided the twenty thousand dollar. Uh if you look at the budget, the, not the um.
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
Report that it goes to page two. Uh there's money available, and I feel that this is a good cause, it would uh extend partnership of other things to make things happen, and. I feel that given the nature of. What they're trying to do, the thousand dollars is not being asked, and especially considering we.
Was it not you that said that we had a five hundred dollar uh maximum?
Thousand P R, but the other one's different. This is our partnership, why not the public relations?
Yes, and there's there's no policy that says that's not a distribution.
What's the difference between the two budgets?
One, your worship, those were the legal one uh was set out when. Um council wanted to be able to work with partner agencies on maybe mural projects or other things of that nature, and that's what I came.
Okay.
So this is five percent of that budget for this year.
Yeah, we just wanted to see probably the breakdown of how there is.
Yes, and I think you should have.
Yeah, that's right.
So therefore, I make a motion to move. That we provide a relationship development to cash nation in the amount of thousand dollars to support youth program and events throughout the year.
I think I'll second that. These guys do a lot of work, like I'm. Share an office in the same space as they do. They do a lot of work, and they do a lot of really good work for the kids.
Okay, all in favor? Forbid. Okay, next request is from the First Assist Hockey Camp. Um we did not read this one last time, so maybe I'll just quickly blitz through it if I can pull it up here.
Yes, your worship, this is first time, this is before.
Yeah, so um this is a dear town Watson Lake, we are reaching out to request your consideration of a donation to a youth. First Assist Hockey Camp, we are hoping to put on March seventh, twenty twenty-four to March tenth, twenty twenty-four. We have been in touch with retired NHL player John Shabo, Shabat.
Shabat.
Shabat, who has a charity called First Assist, which provides education and hockey camps for youth. In primarily northern communities across the country. John Shabat has agreed to come to Watson Lake with a few other indigenous NHL alumni to put on a hockey camp for our youth. Mr. Shabat and the other alumni will also join the Watson Lake old timers in an alumni hockey game to help them invest into a positive active. Positive activity for our community members. If we are able to secure enough funding to make this event a reality. We will extend the hockey camp invite to Watson Lake youth and also to other northern communities. We are requesting that the town of Watson, sorry, we are requesting that the town of Watson Lake. Second, I'm not, I can't read, sorry. We are requesting the town of Watson Lake for the donation of using the facilities, including ice rental for the camp. And alumni game along with community health fees to have an area for players and families to be provided possibly breakfast and a dinner during the event. Community partners who are looking at planning to donate and can support this event are also requesting a copy of your logos, we can include it in our poster. Okay. So thank you for your consideration.
I just got one question. Just uh what like, because we've had hockey camps before, what have you done?
Um.
That's my question as well.
Yeah, cause I know we've had like four.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um in the past, there's been ice time, like it's been donated. There has been some. Reimbursement on some things, but those ones have been different because we've had to bring in special equipment. Because those hockey camps were in the summer, so we've had to buy or rent. Uh dehumidifiers and a whole bunch of other equipment, and that money was covered under the camps. I can, uh your worship, for the record, I can advise that I've been told that. Uh majority of the money is coming for this camp, which is the travel and everything is uh being sponsored by the Air First Nation. So, um.
Which is right heard too, yeah, that's right, yeah.
So we give you a large part from donating the ice time in the.
And and yes, in your worship, I I checked with our our schedules. We have that ice time is not booked, the rink is gonna be sitting empty, and we had no bookings for the community all over that time period. So the space is sitting there. Um it would be really nice from administration's point of view to actually see kids on the ice.
I make a motion to approve the request by First Assist Hockey Camp for the donation of ice time. And areas and the things according to their letter.
I'll sorry.
Slide your counselor first. Give you all a favor.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Great, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. Um we do have council open forum. They would like to say. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thanks for coming, guys.
My only solace is that both those things are coming out of gas tax and not like our. The 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 tier, like the the.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
It's not.
Sorry, Kipper Gallery of Commerce, thank you.
Yeah, um yeah, no, I I totally get that. We um gas tax, we still get our nine hundred. Thousand could be here to ask you a question.
No, I'm sorry.
Um the we we get our nine hundred thousand and um. And the only other part we can drop from is our environmental reserves, so um it's still staying static, so. If we can bring it from the gas tax, then it's smart.
And we still don't know, like, what's the gas, like, what's happening with that, right?
Yeah, actually, I've got a copy of the new draft gas tax agreement. Uh they tightened screws on some stuff, like.
When you can apply for.
Yeah, so um like the rolling stock and all that stuff is really narrowed down. Um but compared to other communities, our gas tax, we're in a, we're in a good spot right now. Um so.
But they have tightened it, so spending some of this money now.
So and really, we're gonna be past our. Perceivable major purchases coming down, down the pipe break, with the fire trucks, like really.
Greater dog truck.
Yeah, we like we, when you go through the list of stuff that we've blocked over the last forty years or five years, it's astronomical. So we're, um I think we're sitting in a very good spot.
Okay, no, that's good.
Are we using that um with canoe to do any, I know the photocopy or is it for anything else?
Um yeah, because uh we're running in some inconsistencies in it, so there's growing pains and we're working through it. Um some of this stuff. Um. Was some of the stuff we've been putting out isn't eligible for canoe, so. Um so but we're staples is one of the things that we can use in those type of things, so. Um we're just working through the small things, cause I'm really leery about putting out. Let's say if we had to buy a new grader, putting it on canoe, right? Um I find that we might get a bigger bang for the buck by going, because some of the suppliers aren't registered with canoe.
Okay.
So if if we put something out, then eliminates some Yukon. Suppliers, because they're not 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 a member of canoe, then we're really, we're we're contravening our own.
Yeah.
Policy, right? Cause Yukon should have it, so what we've been doing. As we move forward, we've been doing a fan out to any suppliers in the territory. And we've been putting on Merx, cause then Merx is out nationally.
Uh and the other thing like that, this like, it's just a comment, um I loved how the New Lights and Fisher movie this weekend. I took my daughter to it, it was awesome. It was so cool. And uh so chances of that happening like once a month, once every couple months, like?
So for council's uh record, we've been, we've actually been, we have plans to do with these uh. Four nights in March. And so the trouble's been finding staff.
That's very good.
I think, I think we've crossed that bridge now. Um so I haven't met with the rec staff. Uh since then, uh since the weekend.
It was awesome, like there was a, it was a good turnout, like I haven't seen sat in there with that much people in a long time.
Well, you should have been with me on uh. Valentine's, uh late Valentine's movie, there was three of us.
Yeah, but there was, like, I don't know, awkward, there was what, like twenty, I think twenty to twenty-five people or something, it was. It was good and like being able to uh drink and eat in there and watch the movie, it was.
Yeah, we've we've come a long ways.
It's quite exciting.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the first couple of showings were like Valentine's night, there was growing pains. There was an issue with the movie and some stuff, so um but. Say, uh Saturdays thing, we've got, we've got, um I think, I know we've got Barbie, we have. So new movies coming, so.
Cool.
So, yes, so anyways, the short, long tournament was, yes, we are.
Yeah, it was awesome, it was good.
Yeah, I thought the whole Kiki weekend was awesome. We passed um that along to Mal, the rec programmer. It was really nice to see all those activities happening in town. It was fun to do the curling and the grads for the pancake breakfast. That was really awesome, and yeah, it was a really fun weekend.
Yeah, nice to see things moving, right? Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
And you're advertising on Watson Lake, on Watson Lake Facebook page, the movies and stuff?
It will be once per year and rec and everything. Cool, so we've um, she's got posters already made up, but. It was just last week that we were actually able to se- secure some staff. We've actually hired, had to hire a couple of extra students.
Dom's all over it.
Thank you all for performing. Okay, so with that, I'll, I need a motion to go in camera.
I give motion to go, Cameron, I'll say.
Thank you, counselor. Slayer counselor, Burdas.
Good night, everybody.
All in favor? Thank you.